Is everyone ready? Good afternoon, this is the Town of Parsonsville Planning Board meeting. We're going to call it to order at this time on November the 17th at 6:02 PM. And we'll try to go right down our agenda. I hope if you need to get a copy of the agenda, it's back there on the table. If you'd like to follow along with us, please do. And we'll go right through it. Correspondence, we call to order. Item number two is correspondence. And the correspondence that we have, everyone may want to look over. We got the Town of Parsonsville Planning Board minutes from October the 20th, 2021. Was everyone looked that over? Board, please, and see if you've got any changes, adjustments, or anything that needs to be done to these minutes. Please let us know at this time. I saw one thing and then I missed it because I forgot where I saw it at. Is everyone okay with the minutes from October the 20th?
Desiree, you made the updates on the printed.
Yeah.
Yep. So there's been some updates from one of the board members? You've already made the changes?
Yes.
Okay.
In that case, I move to accept the minutes as written.
Second by Saban. All in favor, show your right hand, please. Unanimous? Okay. Let's see, our next notice that we have would be review of minutes. We've done that. Item number four is old business. We have none at this time. Does anybody got anything that the board needs to bring up for old business that we might have not carried forward?
No, but you did skip over some more correspondence.
Huh?
You skipped over some more correspondence.
Which ones?
You had the letter of decision that went up to Tammy Hansen. The letter of decision that went up to Patco.
Oh, I will cause.
Email from the manager.
It's on the other cover sheet. It's not on the.
But it's there.
Okay. If you skip to the package, probably find it in the back of your package behind the green paper. You'll find some more correspondence, please. There's a letter, notice of decision and fact finding on the Tammy Hansen property for the proposed licensed daycare preschool. That's one that we have. Then we have Patco Construction, notice of decision and finding the fact, expansion of existing facility in Asu Building. Decision was a conclusion, decision was made for that one too. But we want to look them over. I'm just listing them now so it gives us time to look them over later. And then we have a Parsonsville Planning Board site walk question we sent to MMA Legal Department. And they sent us back some information on site walks, site visits. Those three items are the other three you spoke about, is that correct?
Yep, and then the meeting notification letter that went to Mr. Hastings and the butters notification amount.
Well, I got that up front with the, by the Hastings application.
Right. It's part of correspondence, but it's.
Yeah, but I put it back up there with the application.
Right.
Does anyone have any questions over those correspondences, those three? Any changes that we want to make on the notice of decision and finding the fact to the two people's applications from me and the board members, please? If not, we would move on down the agenda tonight, just moving right along. Is everyone ready for new business, item number five? Okay, item number five, new business. And there's some more correspondence that I put back with this application for Mr. Hastings. One of them is November 8th, notice of receipt of application that their Ministry of Secretary sent out to Mr. Hastings, letting him know that we received his application. And then also notice to abutters on the subdivision application received to all the property owners of budding net property on tax map R8. And the list of all the abutters. And there's a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. There's 14 abutters to that property that we have sent letters out to. Any questions over that correspondence either? So then I guess we come to the big, the big thing now for tonight's agenda. And that's the application from Mr. Michael Hastings, Parsonsville Planning Board, a subdivision approval application form that he submitted to us. I hope everyone's had time to look it over. If not, I'd be more than glad to give everybody time to review. Or does the board have any questions for us to discuss? Anybody on the board, any discussion before we go through this application?
Well, I'm glad they have the survey because initially in the package we first saw, there was no survey whatsoever, which I would have already said.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to see a survey.
I am too.
Do you have any more questions?
Oh, yeah. We will. The package itself, if you go through it, as we start to go through it, you'll see what they've done, in my opinion, is maybe they started in the right direction. There's two pieces, two forms we got here, if you kind of look. One is for a site plan review, and then the other one's for a Parsonsville Planning Board subdivision form. There's two different forms here. They're kind of mixed and matched. They should have been either one way or the other. And I understand why. They probably started one way and then flipped over to the other way.
Can I, would you like to?
Just let us, get a little bit farther, then we will be glad to do that. It's just when things like this come into this way, it's kind of harder for the board itself to review the package because we're looking, we're looking at two different books in. And that's what I try to follow us, what the book is. It makes it a little more difficult for us. As we can look through this, though, for everyone here on the board, I don't know which one to bring up first, which one has the most weight because of application for site plan review, Parsonsville Planning Board. They started on it. It's about, it's a vacant lot. It's in zoning, rules are. And what they're asking to do is to divide 47-plus acres, one parcel of land into two lots, one to roughly over 24 acres. And you're drawing your mouth, the survey will show that. Yes, that. Now then, I don't know if they submitted everything to do this as a subdivide, but then it skipped over to another part, another book, which is our subdivision regulations of the Town of Parsonsville, Maine. And that's, is it a subdivision request? Or is it a site plan review request? We, the board, have got to decide that and give directions on this. Because we've got both, both of them here in front of us. Yes, ma'am?
We have both of them because the code enforcement officer sent us the site plan review.
Okay.
And then when it came into the office, we submitted the survey and all the paperwork. And Desiree contacted us and said, you have the wrong form.
Okay.
So then she sent us the correct form, which is the subdivision form.
Well, if you read, if we read, the more I've studied this, and the more I've studied this, it may not be a subdivision. And, but that's up for everybody on this board to look at in the side.
I'm confused.
Huh? I am too. I'm confused.
Why in the hell would we be dealing with a site plan review before we even talked about subdividing the land? We're putting the cart before the horse here, striking the hell out of it. This is, this is like really troubling.
It is troubling, very much so.
This is like, okay, we're not, even when I'm reading in here, no building.
No.
Now I'm hearing site plan review.
Yeah.
What do we have? What is the site plan review for?
Well, I think we're going to.
That's the application that we received from the code enforcement officer.
With, they're building homes?
No, no. First of all, let me, let me thank you very much for taking time out of your meetings.
Thank you.
We originally contacted, we had survey, we had surveyor, and we contacted the town because the surveyor was concerned that it might be in violation. Because last year, we had an 11-acre parcel on Mudgee Road that belonged to Mike's mother. We inherited it. We split that lot into a six and a half and a half. And those sold.
Right. They're no longer under your name. They're new owners.
They're under his name, yes. Not any longer, no. They're both sold.
Right.
But originally, they were.
Right.
And then we contacted, we asked the surveyor to look at the bad block, which runs upon Huzzy Road.
Right.
And that's when he said, you might be in violation. So I called the town office, and I spoke with the town administrator. And he said, no, they're built separately, they're a separate lot.
They are.
And he said, okay. So then we went to the code enforcement officer, just to confirm. And he said, no, you're all set, it's a separate lot. And then we contacted Desiree, and she said, according to the commitment book, you're all set, it's a separate lot, three different blah blah blah. So away we went. Put it on the market, divided it, put it on the market, we have a buyer.
That's, that is, which, now which lot are you talking about?
The 24.7 acre.
But you haven't divided it yet.
No.
That's right.
Because we didn't, we didn't, we got into the purchase, and we had everything set. The buyer's legal counsel said, we can't complete this, you may be in violation.
Maybe is correct.
You may be. So, so here we are. They took the title. We couldn't proceed with our proceedings.
Right.
And so this, this is where we are.
Right.
It is, it has been divided, the, on paper, it has been divided by our surveyor. The stakes.
But it's not into deeds, deeds have not been done. There's no deeds actually at the recorder's office where it's been divided. Because we haven't approved anything yet.
Right.
Okay.
So that's where we are now, hoping to get approval on the plan to submit to his counsel to proceed. So here we are.
It's very difficult. This is a difficult one for us.
Well, very interesting.
Yes, it is.
I believe we've already had a state law that's clear. In the past five years, as they just said, they've already subdivided land off of this piece of land.
No, not off of this piece of land.
No.
Two separate deeds.
Off of the original.
Two separate deeds.
Two separate deeds.
You're not, it's not the same.
No, it's not the same deed. I found that out today.
It says here, are there other subdivisions within the past five years, say, yes?
Well, because when you look at your ordinance, it says, any lots continuously owned by one person are considered one lot.
Right.
That's why I said yes. Because that's why his lawyer said, we've got a problem.
But there isn't.
Right, well, that's why, because even if it's separate, it gets a little bit more complicated because on the state law, if, if, the first division would be constituted as two divisions.
No, well, yeah, if you go from one, if you go from one lot to two lots.
To two, yeah.
If they sold off under.
And the reason they've done that is so that people can't come in and subdivide.
Right.
Family can't come in and then build one home.
Right.
And then just keep building and building and building.
But there is an exception when you read our, our ordinance book. Have you read our ordinance book recently, any of you guys, on subdivisions?
Oh, I know so.
What does it say about the 40-acre rule?
Lots over 40 acres.
Are not lots.
Are exempt.
Are exempt. And that's what this is.
But with split, with, yeah, but with subdividing, it's locked down to 27.
Which is okay, but they're exempt. And there's no reason to say that they cannot do it because it's an exemption.
I'm not saying that they can't do it.
Right.
What I'm saying is, is that, you know, just it's.
I'm looking at it just like you are.
Subdivision is, it just makes me take little holes.
Yeah, it does, me too.
Makes me want a little bit more information, that's all.
It bothers me a lot because it's the way, if, if those other lots that they had split off originally had been under this, had been under this, under the same deed, we wouldn't even be talking about this. It'd be a dead issue.
Oh, yeah.
But it wasn't. It was under a different deed altogether. So when you split that, that was under 40 acres, and you, what you did and sold it is separating it from this here because this is a different deed, and it's over 40 acres, and the town has accepted the 40-acre rule.
No, I know fully, I know the 40-acre rule well.
Yeah, and I've looked at it.
I know it well.
You know how many times I looked at that book today and studied it and studied it and studied it? So I'm having trouble saying, I hope everybody's listening to all this, and you guys got to have your opinions too. Do we allow this to take place and approve this? It's not really called a lot, not by the book. You can't call 40-plus acres a lot. It must be called either a parcel or something else until you split it down to less than 40 acres, and then you can call it a lot. But by the way, the book is worded, it's not called a lot.
It's a tract or a parcel.
It's got to be called a parcel.
Yep.
Yep, I agree with you, absolutely. Same. But once you go below 40.
The only thing, the only question I have is the, even though the, even though they were separately owned, they were still owned by the same person.
Understand that.
So my question is, does the five-year rule constitute, is the five-year rule a fine?
I don't see that because what, that little piece of paper she just passed out, I've got this other. Please, please go to that piece of paper, it's got the diagrams on it. Desiree, just give it to us. Would everybody take that piece of paper out? And I'll tell you where this, these diagrams came from.
Right, I saw it at the beginning.
Just wait till everybody finds it.
So I'm assuming two lots that were part of the 11 are five and five A?
Yes. Yes, they are. Okay, this diagram is directly out of the book for the municipal code enforcement officer Training and Certification Manual. How did, my scrim is bad. Zoning Land Use Regulation, December 2010. So if you look up at the top left one, see what it says top left of that diagram there? It shows a parcel of 57 acres and two lots that were sold is a subdivision unless the town has adopted the 40-acre lot exemption. So we've adopted exemption, so it's not a subdivision. And that's right out of the code enforcement officer's book. That's why I got this for you guys.
That I'm aware of. I'm already aware of that.
So this is not a subdivision. So really what it is.
What frightened me was, I'm thinking subdivision and.
I am too. Well, you think.
When you hear site plan, when you read on one paper, no development plan.
No development plan.
And then the next thing you're hearing is a site plan, you're going, way.
And there's nothing in there either about where they're going to develop it.
That's what scares me.
And they're not going to develop it. So if they're not going to develop it, and there's no prob, structures being asked for here, or no roads being applied for, all they're doing, asking us to do, the way I read this, maybe you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, is authorize them to subdivide this parcel of land.
Exactly.
That's all, that's all I see this.
Yeah, yeah, it's all a gift.
That's all it can get.
You're 100% right.
And it has to be written.
The five-year rule is what I was talking about.
Right.
If, if land, you know, if, if land is, if an owner owns a piece of land, and he takes that piece of land, and as she was saying, they go up to the attorneys, because if the land is separate, if it was, if it was definitely part of this land, I would definitely say.
No way.
No way.
I agree with you.
But.
These are two different deeds.
But if you look, the reason they do this is because state law mandated it, it's, it's, it's even, it's at the state level. It's not even, there's even stricter in towns, stricter laws.
Right.
They put this in because people were coming in and just buying up a big piece of land.
And then subdividing, subdividing, subdividing.
So that's why we have the five-year rule.
Right.
And every time you, the first division constitutes two divisions.
Or you can go up to three, you can take one and make a dream.
You're not supposed, you can't separate more. You can't, you have to wait five years.
Yeah, yeah.
So it makes it so that they, they phase it.
Right.
All of a sudden, you're like hit with.
Absolutely.
Like down my way.
But what they could have done, if they had enough property originally, is when they divided out those two parcels, the small ones, if they had enough land, they could have done up to three there. Your first divide could be up to three lots, max. And you can't do nothing for five years if you want to, if that, if they had done that, and this big parcel was under the same deed as that.
No, I believe now, I know as well.
I know, but I'm just trying to go over.
It happened across the street from me, and they still did it. It's happened on, it's happened on, where is it? Fenestra Road.
Okay.
And it's happened over the town.
But we're, I'm trying to make sure we follow the rules.
No, me too.
In our book.
That's why, the only thing I was concerned with was the, with the other subdivision, which was the one that I guess is on Mudgee.
Yeah.
Was that subdivided, how many years ago?
Last year.
Last year?
Yeah. But that's still under a different deed. It's not the same deed.
Right. And it was never connected to this property. It never had any connection to this property. This property was never part of this 47-acre piece.
It was never, it was never intended to be one more.
It was a separate, it was a separate cause.
Right.
It was separate.
Sixties, yeah, it was always separate.
So it was separate than this, than this, than this parcel.
Four-year rule. Four-year rule.
Yeah. Anybody else, anyone else from the board? Please speak up. Please ask questions or any thoughts, any concerns that you would have.
I guess my only question is, is, do you plan a subdivision there, sir? Or is there a planned subdivision, do you know?
No, just a house. I sold my house. And year and old distance I've lived coming up. I've been here since with my girlfriend in Cornish. And I've been looking for a place, and that I have no intention of coming money in and build five houses or anything.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't have any intentions like that. I'm trying to leave the clutter that's where I came from behind.
Right, I get you. I understand that completely.
And you're going to keep the other parcel for your personal use too?
No.
Or you want to sell that eventually?
That's on the market as well.
Huh?
That is currently on the market as well.
They don't say nothing about, about that, it doesn't address that at all.
But it will be one large lot.
You're not going to try to, or you can't subdivide it again. Once you do this, that's it for five years. If you, if we approve this, if the board approves this, there's a five-year wait to do anything else with the, with the land at all. Now then.
Five years in terms of subdividing?
Yes.
They can still sell.
They can sell, yeah. They just, nobody, even the other owners.
They couldn't do anything about it.
Well, that's what I was referring to. You can't subdivide it again. Now then, we got through that part, let's go through the application and see if we're missing anything. We need to go through the application in detail enough to make sure we got a complete application. We have not accepted your application yet as complete. That's one thing we have to do before we can even vote to do anything else.
That was one of the questions I had.
Yes. But I wanted to get through the overall review of the process before we started through If you go back to the subdivision book in there at the back, it gives us, I forgot what page this is on. Board, I have a question for the board for us to discuss. Since this is not a subdivision, and they give us a subdivision application partial, and they give us a site plan review parcel, partial, which way should we go? Should we go, because it's really not a subdivision.
Well, we are subdividing the land.
But it's not what I'm seeing, though.
Subdividing the land.
By this, it's not a subdivision.
It's not up to three of the lots.
Right.
So.
It's not.
For ordinance, it's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision. So do we ask them to make sure that we get a complete, a site plan that you formed completely filled out? Or do we ask for what they've done? Because this one here don't have nothing attached to it hardly at all, other than they, they filled out the front top part and signed it and dated it. Because nothing came with it. Yes, ma'am?
Does the planning board even need to review it since they're only dividing the lots?
What's that?
Does the planning board even need to review it?
This is under our jurisdiction.
What do you mean?
Because they're only developing.
It's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision, no.
So they're just dividing. Subdivision, when we have to decide.
It's not a subdivision, I don't know, what do we do?
Site plan content doesn't, that is the.
It doesn't.
Well, we know the site plan application was an error.
Right.
It was an error.
A clerical error. So I think we just tossed that. Well, then obviously, I mean, I think this, this does obviously fall under our land use and subdivision regulations.
It doesn't.
I mean, as far as like what can be done and what can't.
Right, right.
Not that it can't be done, just that it falls under both our land use and.
Yeah.
And the one issue I had was that I was really concerned with, was that we got the application with no survey. And that's new, it'd be, you know, no way. Because we have no clue of what they're doing. I guess the only other question I had is, if you look at, I guess it didn't matter.
It's got to. It's got a boundary survey sketch map right here, signed by the surveyor.
No, I do see the stamp.
It's stamped.
I do see that.
So it has been surveyed, because he's the one that drew this up, the surveyor. No, we're talking about a, a surveyor.
Yeah, someone like-
It has- But who did this?
That's our surveyor.
That's your surveyor, that's what we were talking about.
No, it just made me think, even though these are quite large, they don't have a ratio of scale to them, do they?
Yeah, it is up here. Top, top right.
You know what's illegal to create when you're subdividing? Spaghetti lots.
Yeah.
And what it's called, now this just, this just hit my brain, is just looking at the, the way the lot now, what a spaghetti lot is, is, for instance, somebody bought one on Mudgeet Road, it's only 500 feet wide, they don't meet the one to three ratio. So basically, they're, they're not legal, you, you, you can't build on it, because they don't meet the one to three ratio.
Well, this is way-
As far as when it goes into, so, um-
This is way, a lot, a lot larger than that.
Well, if you look, it's, the scale is 200 feet on the entrance to these lots, that's like the minimum of what's needed in tech, that, of what's needed.
You're talking about frontage?
Frontage, front-
The frontages are down there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, 200 feet is the bare minimum. That's why I'm saying, if you look, the one thing we weren't thinking about was the size of the lots, but it's very close, if you look at, we're just right at the bare-
It's going to be 25, 25 acres.
What's that?
The frontage is 400.
Yeah, it was, but once it's split up.
On each lot.
It's 800.
Right, once it's split.
312.
One's 312 and one's 300 and some feet.
There's two different numbers, you have to add them together.
Yes, yes you do.
422.
You know that.
You know what spaghetti lot is?
Yeah.
Yeah, plus the ones- Yeah, so yeah, you know what's a spaghetti lot is, correct, it's like a piece of off-
Yeah, it's a string.
And, and yeah, sadly people get so, this is not a spaghetti lot. I just, I just want to make sure, look at everything.
Oh yeah, no problem.
So that this way we don't, you know, come back and some, there's a subdivision before us of like, oh, we asked a spaghetti lot and we split that lot. Because you don't know how many subdivisions have been built in this town, it's a pile of lots, they don't even meet the one to three ratio.
Yeah, I understand.
They go in like this.
Yeah. But there's more than enough acres.
This is fine now, man.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's over 25 acres for all of them.
Well, no, when I was looking at the dimensions here to the scale, I love maps, so I said to myself, first I said, is this going to be like, is there some lots where people own 150 acres, now I do, it's like 400 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we make a motion to reject this and get this off the table?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we reject the site plan review. As in-
Subdivision. Oh, you second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you hear that Gerard?
That Gerard?
We're just accepting the application. No, I'm saying we're rejecting the-
The site plan review.
And going with the, the application.
Right, we're going with the application subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need a vote?
Yes, we need a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand please.
Boom.
Unanimous? That one's dead.
Yeah.
Now we got to go to the other one. Which is the Parsonsville Planning Board subdivision approval application. Do we have everything? It's quite lengthy, it's about four or five pages.
Oh yeah. Subdivision.
But there's nothing they're doing other than dividing the land, just remember that.
They're only, they're only-
They're only dividing the lands.
We do have a survey.
Yes, we do have a survey.
We do know that, that they, uh, we do know that these other lots that were subdivided last year are, um, from a separate project.
From a separate deed, separate project, yes, yes.
Actually, comes to subdividing, something just hit my brain, if an owner owns so many amount of acres, then they're not exempt from the 40 acre rule in the state law. How many acres?
It doesn't say that, not in the book, it doesn't say that.
Trust me, this was a big issue, this is why the developer across from me hides his acreage, like he only owns 40 or 50, it's in someone else's name so that they can do this. Trust me, I'm honest-
That's not the way I read your book, though, I'm going back through the book and read that again.
Trust me.
No.
I, I went through years, years dealing with this.
A parcel of 40 or more acres shall-
Yes, but state law dictates, state law dictates, if an owner owns a certain amount of acreage, they are, they, they, that, they are not bound by that 40 acre rule, because they're considered to, to, to own a vast amount of property and they could abuse that law. So this is state law, that if you own, let's say, 500 acres, you know, when you own over a certain amount of acreage, you have to, the 40 acre rule is not applied. That just popped into my brain.
Well, there's 14 acres across the road.
But how many total, how many acres do you own in the state of Maine?
Oh.
Is it over, is it over?
30, 30 acres, if I'm sure we are, and however, and-
So nothing substantial, no substantial 40s?
Cause she's saying 75 or less. That's not substantial.
They're just little things that are going through my brain.
Just go back to the application, see what everybody comes up there. They're not asking for any streets, no recreational areas, no common use area?
Oh, one, one question I have, it says, is any portion of the property, uh, or, I don't know if I break color or anything.
It tells us right here on, exactly why they're doing this to Gerard and Aaron and Stephen. Survey map including packet, no development intended, division of lot into two separate parcels for purpose of sale, that's all.
This is the question I have, I guess you're going to build a home there, so that's why they have individual septic tanks. Because on the application, the, the, which is interesting, which, um, we're not, if we pass this application under, let's see, is this a subdivision application? Or like, it's just not locked in with the, yeah, this is the subdivision application.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Scary thing, if we pass this, this is not something for us to pass, it's something for Jesse to do.
Right.
Only one home.
Right.
So our job is only to subdivide the land.
Yes, absolutely.
But if you look, this is what concerned me when I first saw this, when I got it from Desiree, is it says individual wells.
Yeah.
Uh, which plural, you know, and then it says individual septic tanks. So that got me a little concerned, um, so, um-
Well, it's intended to be two separate lots, so there would be-
Right.
Separate tanks and wells on-
They're assuming that we're not-
You're assuming that.
Many wells or septic tanks.
What goes with-
Well, the thing is, is we, bringing this before this board, if we approve it with this language in here, it's almost like we're approving those two homes to go in, when really, that's a code enforcement officer matter, unless it was a subdivision.
Yes, no.
Unless there was more than two homes going on that property.
Mm-hmm.
And so they were planning on subdividing it, the planning board really doesn't have the authority to, um, you know, this, I don't know why this paperwork's even here.
I don't know.
Because we really don't have the authority to do this, this is, this is up to Jesse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, unless a subdivision was included before us and then this would be-
At that time, then it's different.
Yeah, this would be very applicable, but I don't know why this is even in here, it's just a- Kind of confusing, but the site plan thing is-
It's confusing.
Yeah, I thi- I think, I think that's, it, it, no fault of you guys, you just, you got the-
It's got to be redone.
You gotta, you got the clock before the boss should be given a site plan before the land's even been, uh-
But even the town fully-
Yeah, before the land's even been legally divided, you're already being given a site plan thing, which is kind of scary.
If you go to this other backup of that though, Gerard, so you guys'll know too, there's two more pages under 2F, item 2F. You get to that point, you'll read there what it says. Survey, survey map including the package, no development intended, they don't, the sellers that own it now do not intend to develop anything.
Yep.
Division of lot into two separate parcels for purpose of sale, that's all it's for.
Well, they don't develop, they've got to put two homes there, so they've got to develop, but the point is, is they're not subdivided.
But the people that are putting the homes aren't the ones before us.
Right, right, they're just looking to subdivide the lot.
That's all they're looking for.
So they can sell.
Right.
Aaron's overflying the vote.
I know, I know.
There's a warning over here somewhere.
Yeah, I just closed my ear.
All right.
Do we, does anyone want to make a motion to accept this application as complete? With the exception of the water source and the, how do I want to say that? About the septic-
How about we accept the subdividing of the lot, uh, with none of the applicable conditions having anything-
For development.
Well, with development.
For just purposes.
For just purposes.
Yeah, we're, we're, so like it's in the findings of fact that we're subdividing the lot, but in the purposes of, of, uh, just to subdivide the lot.
Just subdivide the lot on-
For not any development.
No development.
No, no septic, we should probably cross that off.
Yes, we need to make sure it's on the findings of fact.
I don't know if we should say we're no development, because it's something we're saying that they can't develop later, which we don't.
Well, no, what I mean, no development, we're not that we say, see, we could say no development right now.
Gerard, why don't we say we're accepting the application for purposes of subdivision for sale?
Right, exactly, what I mean is, we don't put anything in there relating to-
Right, that way we're not throwing a wrench into something down the road, it has nothing to do with us.
We can word it in a way that we're not throwing a wrench.
Because if he's going to build a house in there later, then he's got to come before us with his plan.
Yeah, but I'm ignoring him, he's not here yet.
Yeah, he's not here.
If we put in, it wouldn't matter anyway, because it's the CEO's preview to give them no development.
That's right.
We don't have that authority.
Right, right, right.
You know, we only deal in subdivisions.
Right.
We don't deal in single family.
Right.
I make a motion that we accept the application for purposes of subdivision for sale.
Second, ma'am.
Any more questions at this time, anybody from that motion? Yes ma'am?
I'm sorry, again, it's only two lots, it's not a three lot, three or more lot subdivision, so do you guys need to approve anything?
What's that, say that again?
It's not more than three lots, so it's not a subdivision.
It's not.
Does this board actually need to approve anything tonight?
We might not-
Well, actually, we need to have a findings of fact showing that we allowed this parcel to legally be separated.
We don't need to necessarily approve it because it's not a subdivision.
Right, Joe Schmo off the street can come in and, or can divide his property whenever he wants, they're just in a unique situation that they submitted an application.
Right.
So, like I said, do you guys really need to approve anything? Can you just say that there was a clerical error, we do not need to approve this then?
Move on.
Well, I mean, if we don't approve it, then how does the lot legally get separated?
That's up to them, because it's not a subdivision.
It's up to the surveyor.
It's up to the surveyor. If it's not a subdivision-
I'm, I'm, I'm just drawing my two cents in there, because if it's not a subdivision, it's really nothing for the board to approve.
I think we need to keep our nose out of it, that we need to move it that way, so that they don't have a problem.
Well, I don't think, that's, I don't know, um, if people just can't be parceling off land, they, they just can't sell land.
Well, they should divide it once.
Technically, they can.
Which would be this, this division.
Right, oh, that's true.
And if they divide it more than once, so say they wanted to split this into three lots, then they should be before you for something.
Right, no, you're right, you're right.
But it's just two lots, again, is there anything that this board actually needs to approve? Just plain double document here.
So should we just draft a letter, sign that?
No, because I, when I read this here for subdivision regulations, it says Article 1 purposes, it says, "We are the authority, who is the planning board, to make sure we, the comfort, convenience, safety, health and welfare of the people in the town of Parsonsville, to protect the environment and serve the natural and cultural resources identified in the comprehensive plan, as important to the community, to ensure that a minimal level of services and facilities are available to the residents of New-" well, it's not a subdivision, "to minimize the potential impact for a subdivision on neighboring properties and to promote, to promote the development of an economically sound and stable community." So there's some things that we need to protect, it's in this book. So I think we need to make a decision of accept, some one way or the other, of accepting this application as complete for the, um-
Purpose of sale.
For the purpose of sale, to allow the owners to divide the parcel, I won't say lot, divide the parcel for the purpose of sale. And everything we've reviewed, it makes sense, now then, do we have to have a site visit? Do we have to have a, uh, public hearing? Since this is not a subdivision, I don't know if we have to have either one of those. Because that would be, I'm saying, no, we don't need it, but I need to bring that up for the board for discussion.
You guys have a lot of this motion too.
Yeah, so go over the motion again, Saban.
Oh, wow, that was a while ago. No, I, I made a motion to approve the application for the purpose of subdivision of the property for sale, of the parcel.
Of parcel. And Saban's second.
So Saban's motion here and-
Oh, right, okay, Aaron's seconded. Any other questions, show of hands on that motion, please. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Unanimous? So that's done, now then, let's move on, and the last two questions I had, since it's not a subdivision, we don't need to look at the property in reality, we don't need to, the butters have been notified, but are they going to come to, is any butters in here tonight? Any, hmm, there's two butters in here tonight, wow.
Good question.
Yeah. Yeah. So since it's not a subdivision, all we're doing is authorizing them to split that lot, named that parcel, it's not a lot, I keep wanting to call it a lot, it's a parcel. To split that parcel in two, do we have to have a site visit and a public hearing? What does a board, what does a board say? What do you guys say? See, I don't think we need to do it, but I want to hear everybody's opinion.
If there's an butters involved, it gets into the purposes of due process.
We just, well, we approved the-
As far as like, having to be able to hear what the butters have to say?
Mm-hmm.
In, in the decision-making process, because they are, you know, they'll be impacted by whatever goes on.
Well, I don't think we'd have a slight visit, but if we have to have a public hearing, I'm okay with that. So the butters get to-
Interesting to hear what the butters have to say.
Yeah, yeah, we need to hear that, yeah, we can have a public hearing, yes ma'am? Yeah, go ahead.
But again, back to, they've only two, two lots, not three. So again, Joe Schmo off the street, Aaron, if he owns a great amount of acres, can separate his lot anytime he wants without coming to the board.
Or having to notify others.
Right. They're just in a unique situation where they, or I know the assumption, they're told that they need to come because they own a particular lot and they split that.
I don't agree with your assumption.
Well, I have a question, because when you subdivided last year, did you come before the board? How many lots were subdivided?
They didn't need to.
One eleven acre lot.
Oh, just one eleven acre. Oh, okay. So there was no, there was no more than one piece that was divided.
So you just divided it and sold.
So just one piece.
That's basically what's happening.
Registered the surveys.
Basically what's happening.
So see, that's what's confusing. It's on the application as this previous subdivision. I don't know what main law is, is, as I said, I do know that if you own over a certain amount of acres, you do have, the 40 acre rule is not applied. That's why these, that's why these lumped, these real estate barons never let anybody know. They don't own anything.
But they put that on there due to a concern raised by the buyer's counsel.
No, right, I understand.
So it's not, that was the only reason that that made it on there.
I think they've made it here just by a lot of misdirection.
Yes, yes.
Exactly. You're right, a lot of this problem is elsewhere, has nothing to do with what's going on here.
Would this even be an issue if they didn't come before you because this wasn't an issue in the first place?
Probably not.
And we wouldn't have gotten letters.
You wouldn't have got letters. You would not have got letters.
We wouldn't be here. I thought it was going to be three or four or five, you know, subdivisions in the east and our next door neighbor.
Right, yep. All they're doing is taking that big parcel and splitting it in half.
And I agree with that, and that was already.
And that was it, that's it.
So they can't subdivide it further because they created a backlog.
No, they cannot for five years, they cannot divide it further.
Right, but they did create a backlog because they can't, you can't make, you can't divide it down the middle, north to south.
Why not?
Because they wouldn't have enough frontage.
Frontage, yeah, if it's divided again, you're right.
Right.
But this is it. It's protected, it's land law.
I think we spent a lot of time on something we didn't.
Now then, since, since our troublemaker.
We need to approve.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Since our troublemaking secretary has brought the point up, should we rescind the last motion and just.
Kick him out?
And just say, we don't need to make any motion.
Here's my only concern is that misdirection has brought them here and some misinformation, and they're trying to move forward with a sale, and I want to make sure that when they leave, they're clear from us.
Right, I agree.
I mean, I don't think our decision hurts anything. We haven't violated anything.
No, because we're following the book.
Right.
That's all that matters, we follow the book.
And the butters don't seem to be here out of concern.
No, they're not out of concern.
Now that they know that there's not 500 houses.
They sound like they're okay. Uh, yes. Yes, ma'am?
Would it be feasible to put together a letter stating that because it's only a two lot division of a parcel, the planning board does not need to review it? That the applicants can divide it on their own without planning approval?
The problem I have with that is, as I said, if we go down that lane, then we have a big wig developer come in that owns thousands of acres of land, but yet he says he only owns 50 or 70, fine. And then he starts to say, well, you did in this case, so you've got to do for me. And that's what scares me, is because a lot of these developers, they have land in their family's name, and they keep it out of their name, they'll come before the board, they'll say one thing, and then the next thing you know, there's a huge subdivision and they own tens of thousands of acres.
Well, this is a single lot.
No, I, no, I'm just saying, I'm worried about, I'm worried about when we start, if we start saying, you know, you know.
That things aren't under jurisdiction.
I appreciate that, but I think that in this situation, it's a singular lot divided in two. I think the concern of the previous lot, five and five A, being divided, has no bearing because it's on a separate deed.
Right.
So this singular lot.
Sorry, just had a question. Was it the CEO that made you feel you had to come to the board, or was it the?
The legal counsel, or the buyer's legal.
For the buyer's legal.
They recommended, they recommended, so legal counsel recommended the, that before you divide, you come before the board.
They said they may, they didn't say it was, they said there may be an issue.
Well, you see, it might be better for them legally to have a decision from the board.
Well, we've already kind of.
Because it would be legally binding for them, instead of having this gentleman buy the property, and then there being some issues. But again, we do have some butters here too, and we haven't taken that into account.
Right.
But no, on the.
What's that?
It would be.
Yeah, okay.
Who was that, ma'am, I'm sorry?
They're both, the butters said it's okay.
You thought they were putting in a new subdivision?
Not right next door, and I thought.
No, I know the feeling.
So it's okay, and I should not be here, obviously.
Well, no, no, I'm glad you feel better, that's, that's one good thing.
Yeah, we went through this, that's a good thing we went through this like we did.
Yeah.
It's a learning, it's a learning thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything, it's always learning.
Let's hold on for just a second. What was our last motion? Read it again.
The motion is to approve the subdividing of the property for sale, not motion to approve.
We probably can just leave it just like that then. Is that, what's the board's preference?
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
I think that it doesn't allow for some of your concerns to come up in the future, Gerard.
With subdividing it just for the purpose of sale, not for any subdivision.
No subdivision, no development.
We put in the language, we're subdividing it just.
We can't say for no development, because then we're.
No subdivision, no further subdivision.
Right.
I think that would.
Well, she's, we've already made the motion. We already voted.
It's kind of a future, I mean, if somebody else purchased the land.
No, what I mean, future, I'm not talking about, then they can come back before the board.
They can come back before.
I'm just saying, I'm saying in regards to you, ma'am. Like in other words, you guys.
Do we need to go back to our question about public hearings?
They're a whole ball.
Because our motion's already approved.
Right, the motion's already approved. Now then, do we need to have a public hearing? I don't think we have to have a site visit. I don't, do we need a public hearing? Because they were here.
Well, what about.
The ones that were concerned with it.
The thing, the thing is, is you never know, I mean, let me give you an example, my personal situation. I had to find out from my neighbors, and I came to the town hall, and I said, is there a development going on? No. I had to, and they told me, no. My neighbor said, there's a huge development going in the front. I said, what do you mean? I was just at the town hall. So there's a lot to say about, at least transparency. I have no problem with approving this application whatsoever, I'm just talking about the accord that we had in the butler here, so obviously, we did, and we did send out a lot of those. But it is important sometimes to cover all the bases, but I don't want to complicate this.
I feel, I understand why you're coming from Gerard, I know also treading on whether or not we should even be talking about this, so I think we're more protecting ourselves than we are not.
As I said, I'm fine with approving the application.